Yeah.
Hi, Board. Just gave you a thumbs up.
Oh, yeah. Hey, good morning. Happy New Year. Welcome to the first meeting of 2023 for the Bucks County Commissioners, January 4th. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. We're going to begin with a presentation proclamation the Commissioners have regarding this being National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And we have a couple people we're going to have come forward to speak a little bit about the issue. "Whereas human trafficking is a borgedulous crime against individuals that violates the most basic human rights and deprives victims of every shred of personal freedom. Human trafficking occurs when a person is recruited, harbored, obtained, or exported through force, fraud, or coercion for the purposes of sexual or labor exploitation, involuntary servitude, or other types of mental and physical abuse. Human traffickers target impoverished and marginalized children, women, and men, isolating them from society and supportive networks and exploiting them for personal and monetary gain. Human trafficking is a multi-billion dollar criminal industry that denies freedom to at least 24.9 million people around the world. The U.N. estimates that more people are now harmed by human trafficking worldwide than have been at any other point in human history. Those most impacted are women and girls, or 75% of the total. In 2021, Polaris, a leading data-driven social justice movement, reported data trends from the National Human Trafficking Hotline indicating that online recruitment increased by 22% in 2020, with a 125% increase in recruitment through Facebook and a 95% increase in recruitment on Instagram. And in 2021, Polaris reported the National Human Trafficking Hotline received more than 1,000 signals from Pennsylvania, with 341 signals from victims or survivors of trafficking. Now therefore do we, the Board of Bucks County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim January 2023 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month throughout the county of Bucks. In doing so, we offer our support to the Bucks County Coalition Against Human Trafficking, a project of NOVA, and its mission to eradicate human trafficking within our communities and enhance human dignity for all. We wish the Coalition continued success in this endeavor on the occasion of its 10th anniversary." And today, we have Julie Dugury and Elise Hoekstra, who are going to speak a little bit about the issue.
Good morning. I'm Julie Dugury. I'm the Coordinator of Volunteers and Community Outreach with NOVA, and I am co-chair of the Bucks Coalition Against Trafficking. With me is Karen Quitzner, who is my co-chair, sitting back here, and Elise Hoekstra, who is the organizer for BCAT. I also want to mention a few people that are with us that are important members of our steering committee: Woody from Valley Youth House, Cindy Labarre, Bucks County Drug and Alcohol, Chelsea Jackman from the County Law Department, Penny Ettinger from NOVA, Sarah Bolden with YWCA, Paige Newman with THE WELL, Matt Weintraub with Bucks County DA's Office. And also want to mention that Children and Youth is also a partner with us. I want to thank the Commissioners for helping to raise awareness about the crime of human trafficking by issuing this proclamation. The Commissioners have supported BCAT since our very first anniversary in January of 2014. We're excited to celebrate with you this year our 10-year anniversary. I want to share a little bit about our history. The issue of human trafficking had been getting more attention internationally and nationally in the mid-2000s. As Bucks County's comprehensive crime victim service agency, it was natural for NOVA to be one of the leading voices in raising awareness about human trafficking. In January of 2013, a community meeting was convened, led by former NOVA Associate Director Kathy Bennett and community member Luciana Alderfer. In collaboration with community leaders and individuals from all around the county, we developed a mission statement, leadership structure, and established subcommittees, forming the Bucks Coalition Against Trafficking. Since then, BCAT has been making steady progress in raising awareness about human trafficking and continuing to improve the community response and support services for survivors of human trafficking who live among us. In 2014, Dan Emmer began working with the Bucks County Commissioners and staffed with Congressman Mike Fitzpatrick's office to rehab a county property and open THE WELL, a safe house for survivors. BCAT has hosted community quarterly meetings over the past decade, offering the community opportunities to hear from experts in the field, including survivor leaders, law enforcement professionals, and academic experts. BCAT's subcommittees meet regularly to advance the mission of BCAT. Most recently, our partners at the YWCA worked with the county to establish Haven House, a safe house for survivors and their families. With the adoption of Ordinance Number 166, we see the law department enforcing safety and health requirements to regulate local massage businesses. And in June of 2022, after an investigation by the Ben Salem Police Department and prosecution by the Bucks DA's Office, Andrew Hall was sentenced to 17 to 40 years in prison for trafficking a 15-year-old victim at a local hotel. We are thankful for the commitment of NOVA in providing staffing and in-kind support for BCAT, and we are so grateful for all the support our partners have provided over these first 10 years. We look forward to the work ahead in 2023 and beyond. And now I'd like to introduce Elise.
Thank you, Julie. BCAT has accomplished so much over these last 10 years, but where are we now? Throughout these last 10 years, the Bucks Coalition Against Trafficking has grown and evolved, but unfortunately, so has the crime of human trafficking. As we all know, over the last decade, humans have shifted their lives to rely more heavily on technology and online platforms. Traffickers are eager to change their business model, to change their needs, and increase their profits, so as a result, they follow online trends. We saw this change highlighted throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, and even now. In 2020, the National Human Trafficking Hotline reported a 22% increase in online recruitment into trafficking schemes and reported the Internet as the top recruitment location for all forms of trafficking. Part of BCAT's growing process is to adapt to these changes and find the ways we can combat sexual and online exploitation with our partners and our services. In 2022, with the help of NOVA's Training Coordinator Jamie Pfister, BCAT continued to provide human trafficking trainings to over 500 community members and professionals. But our trainings now include a focus on online recruitment and how we can protect others and ourselves from online exploitation. In 2022, BCAT also developed new trainings with the help of working groups for school staff and administrators that highlight children's Internet use and how to protect children online. BCAT hosted four public community trainings last year, with one focusing on how to talk to your children about online exploitation. And additionally, with our community outreach and awareness efforts, we created a bookmark suitable for both adults and children about trafficking and Internet safety. BCAT has also evolved through the years to improve advocacy services with the use of technology. Our trainings and meetings provided via Zoom have allowed us to reach more members and professional partners. In 2022, NOVA served over 50 human trafficking and sexual exploitation victims. Online assessment tools, video calls, technological investigative methods were all used to provide services to survivors. Providers here in Bucks County working with victims and survivors can develop connections with one another and use technology to share valuable resources. Through these online connections, a survivor here in Bucks County was able to utilize resources from three BCAT partners: THE WELL, NOVA Advocacy, and the YWCA. BCAT hopes to continue to harness those connections and partnerships, and technology makes the sharing of that information possible. We invite everyone in our community to learn more about trafficking, share what they've learned with others, and engage with BCAT to support these efforts. For January, BCAT is focusing on spreading awareness throughout the community. We invite folks to visit Calm Water Coffee Roasters in Bristol to see the art created by survivors, or view it on our virtual gallery on Facebook. We also have the Red Stand Installation Project, and we have packets here with us today for anyone who would like to participate in the back. The full list of events for the month are provided in the handout in the table in the back, along with some general information. The Bucks Coalition Against Trafficking aims to continue to provide these much-needed services to our community, and I'm proud to be a member of this organization. Together, we hope to continue to grow and evolve to meet the needs of survivors here in Bucks County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate all the hard work, obviously. And you had the proclamation earlier. You want to bring up some of your gang here who's going to help? Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Obviously, very important work is being done. We also have another, not actually on the agenda, but it's another recognition we'd like to do. Commissioner Marsaglia is going to read a proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you. And it's my honor. Commendation. It's my honor to be able to read this commendation to our just-retired employee, Michael Duncan. So the commendation reads as follows: "Dear Mike, for nearly 42 years, you have displayed a remarkable dedication to the county of Bucks and to serving its government and residents. Across the decades, you have risen through the ranks of county employment, from the kitchen of Nishamani Manor Nursing Home to your current role as building supervisor here in Doylestown, all the while embodying a genuine commitment to service that has made you an invaluable part of the county team. As building supervisor, you have been the go-to person for not only general service employees, but for employees in every department who knew Mike could help. And while your job was maintaining a building, you made it just as much about tending to people inside of it and building relationships with those who work here every day. As you head into this new chapter of your life, we hope you can enjoy even more time with your true love, your daughter and family. Please note that Bucks County is a better place to live and work because of your service. We join all Bucks Countyans in saluting you upon your retirement and wish you continued health, happiness, and the satisfaction of a job well done." Thank you.
First saying thanks to God for enabling me to be here today. Commissioners, thank you so much. County of Bucks, thank you so much. It has indeed been a pleasure to serve here in Bucks County for 41, 42 years. I just want to say thank you to everybody. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Before we get to public comment, just one thing. Two items on the consent agenda are being pulled, 6A and 6B. Learned, I think it was this morning or late yesterday, the issue with the vendor, that we have to pull those off the agenda, 6A and 6B. Okay, moving into public comment, on-agenda items. Reminder, this is on-agenda items themselves. We have had people who have taken a look at a title and gotten very broad with how they view that title. Actually talking, the purpose of this specific spot on our agenda is to ask questions about specific agenda items. So we'd ask people to restrict themselves to that. First name on the list is Andy Warren.
Commissioners, and congratulations for fort-excellent work. A long time employee. Fantastic job. Hired by enlightened Commissioners, I might add. I have three questions today. Item number 1J, that's a contract for to reallocate funds that were spent last year. So my question is, are this funds that haven't been spent, so we're doing something else than what they were approved for? Just exactly what was that, and how much were the funds? Item 3B is and I'm asking because I don't know. It talks about a contract with Aramark. I thought Aramark was basically for food services. And if that's the case, we're have a contract for preventive maintenance services. Does that pertain to food? And it's for three months at $300,000. Does that equate to over $1 million if we stretch it out over the course of the year? And my final question is item number 12. Now, this is money coming through the county, and I rarely ever question that. That's a good thing. But I'm a little perplexed in that the first one is $1.5 million for three years. The second grant or funds is $1 million for seven and a half years. And as I understand it, it's to build the bike path. And if that's the case, is this a three-year project or a seven-year project? Just a little explanation of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ed Mackhouse?
Ed Mackhouse from Buckingham. Item 2, Children and Youth. Item C, with Maternity Care Coalition Philadelphia. I approve this and think this is worthy of supporting maternity care. It's obviously that women who are pregnant shouldn't take drugs, they shouldn't take alcohol. They should watch what they do, watch the medications. My concern is about the vaccines. This is an unpopular point of view. I know most people believe in the vaccines. I don't. I didn't take it. '79, I had a minor case, no fever from that, from the virus, but I believe there's information, you can get all kinds of information, pro and time vaccines. From the Health Impact News I've read, it says, "Stop the Infant Side." Has vaccines been approved for pregnant mothers? Does this kill unborn babies? It says in Health Impact News, "80 Canadian doctors dead following COVID vaccine mandate." There's on some of this information, you could see, "Prunicle embalmer." 85% of dead bodies now have strange blood clots since COVID vaccine rollouts. What is the safety involved in giving, allowing pregnant mothers to have vaccines? Have these COVID vaccines? This one says, information I found, says 4,202 fatal deaths in the vaccine database following COVID-19 vaccines. It says 44,000 dead, 4 million injured following COVID-19 vaccines in European database of adverse reactions. Josh Shapiro is now governor. He's changed. He's not going to follow exactly who. There is the Twitter's changed, and now they're revealing information. So is the media giving people, the pregnant mothers, the proper advice about taking vaccines and things? And so I think the Maternity Care Coalition, I'd like to see what kind of advice they're giving. Is it best for the babies and the mothers? And so I think it's important, my father said, "Do not give along with the crowd when they're going in the wrong direction." I believe they're going in the wrong direction. I don't get any benefit about challenging this. People get a lot of benefit from the vaccine industry. So please, in your responsibilities, take a look at this stuff and decide whether an infant should get this vaccine. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Purcell Linden? I'm sorry, nevermind. You signed up for General. Apologize. Beth Curcio?
Good morning. Again, I'm going to complain that we do not get the agenda soon enough. I know you're all busy, but you get paid to do this, and all of us have careers and families and everything else, and we get it like 24 hours. After a long day, we have to go through this. So I'm going to ask you again to please see if you can get this up and a little bit more information. So I just grabbed like number one, and I wanted to go over care links. It seems, you know, especially it being human trafficking, we know that now Arizona has become, is pretty much owned by the Mexican cartels. And this is where human traffic comes to. The problem with this administration and all this money throwing at things, you never solve a problem. You just keep giving money, and it gets laundered between politicians. We all know that. So these poor children suffer. They are stolen by the cartel, they are brought over. And we also have a whistleblower, if you guys want to watch Project Veritas, of the woman who whistleblowed in the government and saw it firsthand. This is a tragedy. These are children. Just imagine your own child. So when you see all this money going to this, the care links for this rehabilitation, we wouldn't have to do all this rehabilitation if the drugs weren't coming in. We know from what, a couple of meetings ago, when Diane, your daughter, talked about the, you know, settling the Ukrainians and all that. It's time for us to take care of the American citizens. It's time for us to filter this money to our vets. We can't take care of the world. We ruin these countries by taking out the best of the best. But right now, the Biden administration is allowing them to empty their jails into this country. And what are we going to do now? We now have Fetterman, who's going to empty the jails. Are we going to do, I'd like to see more money go to the police and the sheriff to take care of the people of Bucks County. If you don't think this crime is going to come up from Philadelphia because you filter money to the wrong places... money to the wrong places, I mean, the government just gets bigger and bigger, and I'm sure on the county level also. So I, you know, like I said, you never give us time, time enough to go through these agendas. So I'm asking, please, at least 48 hours before, or maybe over the weekend, that we can see these agendas, because it's just not right. You sit up there, you are to work for we, the people. Instead of gabbling us and telling us we're conspiracy theories, and so on, and so on, you are to work for we, the people. We pay your salaries, and you're up there like judges. Maybe you ought to do it like Montgomery County, where you're on the same level, and we get some time to ask questions, or have an open forum at night where more people can make it. Thank you.
Megan Brock?
Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. I'm going to comment on four A. Sorry, can you hear me now? Is this working? I'm going to comment on four A, conflict counsel. It looks like you're approving $637,000 to approve a contract with 15 private attorneys to represent individual defendants in cases. My question is, that's a large chunk of money. What is the overall budget of the Bucks County Legal Department? How much money does the Bucks County Legal Department spend every year? How much money do you have access to? And I ask this because right a couple days before Christmas, Bucks County government decided to give me an early Christmas present. They filed a fifth lawsuit, one, two, three, four, five, fifth lawsuit against me to hide public records. Now, I'd like to explain the process that's happened. I filed a public records request, which is a part of our government.
Is Brock, the comment, you're.
It's a way, do not interrupt me. You did not interrupt, anyone else do not interrupt me.
The item that's talking about is about court councils.
This is, you are not allowed to interrupt me.
Which is not actually part of the law department, it's actually courts.
So you file, when you file a right-to-know request, the agency has the ability to either give you the records or deny them. Bucks County denied me five times other records I requested. I filed an appeal. This went to appeals officer in Harrisburg. It's a legal process, the Bucks County Department, you had its legal team file information, and at the end of the process, the Office of Open Records decided that I was correct. Bucks County had to hand over the records. That's the public records process. That's a process that's meant to keep our politicians and our government transparent, which is a bipartisan issue. That's something everybody should care about. I don't care if you're Republican, Democrat, independent, you should want your government to be transparent. What Bucks County has done, five times now, is instead of handing over the records, like Harrisburg said they needed to, they have filed a lawsuit against me to have that final determination overturned, so they don't have to provide the records. This is an abuse of power, this is an abuse of government. As I mentioned here, they have millions of dollars. I would love to know, how many millions of dollars do you have at your disposal? I am a normal person. I do not have millions of dollars. I do not have a legal team. This is extremely unfair, and it's abuse of power, and it needs to stop. You accuse me of wasting tax dollar money, that's not true. I am just asking for records. All you have to do is hand the records over. What are you hiding? Why will you not hand over the records? And why do you keep slandering and defaming myself and other constituents who are going through the legal process and just want some transparency? Why do you do that? Why do you think it's appropriate to do that to your constituents? It is not appropriate. You need to stop. Thank you.
Vana Darmut? Okay. All right, those are all the names of the people from agenda. Just to comment on a couple of the questions that were raised. Mr. Warren asked about the Lenape Fund reallocation, just taking a look. This was a reallocation done essentially because of what services were needed versus what services we thought might be needed. So just to kind of read off the memo, real allocates $265,000 from respite care acute community residential rehabilitation to administrative management, supported living, and telephone crisis. It also adds a rate of pay in, following, I think this was a state, yeah, it's a state set rate for services, which was added in as well. So it's a couple additions to the contract. Aramark, there's a question about Aramark, and if you want to touch on that, Mr. Kratz?
Thank you, Commissioners. Aramark is our maintenance and facilities person for both the youth center and the four buildings on the campus of the Department of Corrections. That does go out for bid regularly. You know, the services they provide, it's basically 24-hour service to us. We're like a little city, we have our own, you know, electrical power plants, water, HVAC, which was, you know, a little bit of a challenge during the big freeze a week ago. They provide all the basic services, you know, replacing an outlet, minor welding, pretty much anything we need them to do in-house. So we're extending that contract out. You can divide that by three, that would give you a round number as to what that costs a year for both the correctional facility, the men's correctional facility, the new women's expansion center, and the Bucks County Youth Center.
Thank you. Trails expansion, we're actually going to be hearing from Rich Braler, our transportation planner, during regular agenda, so he can address the question that Mr. Warren raised about timelines and everything else. In terms of the other questions, the biggest item we have on our agenda, item one, which one of our speakers questioned, is about $5.2 million for behavioral health development or programs. Those are programs that assist people who are special needs, family members of children who are special needs. A little hard for me to understand why anybody would be against spending money on people who are special needs and helping families who have special needs children, but, you know, I guess everyone's entitled to their opinion. In terms of item four, conflict counsel, these are attorneys appointed by the courts, not the law department. So the reference to $637,000 coming out of the law department budget actually is not accurate. The courts put up a list of attorneys, these are contracts with these attorneys. If there's some kind of conflict of interest with the public defender's office, these attorneys are the ones who get hired to, to come in and do that work, to alleviate the conflict of interest. Okay? All right, so those are addressing the public comment issues. We have two minutes, taking a look at the consent agenda, minutes of the December 19th, 2022 meeting to set salaries, and minutes of the December 21st, 2022 meeting, as well as resolutions one through 11. And again, accepting six A and six B, which we're removing. And just to give highlights here, I mentioned, just in the consent agenda, $5.2 million for behavioral health development or programs, about $170,000 for children and youth, over $200,000 for emergency management for technology upgrades, about $92,000 for housing, recorder of deeds office getting about $49,000 for software upgrades, human services getting about $10,000 for training. So a lot of good stuff being done just in the consent agenda. Is there other questions about the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to regular agenda. As I mentioned, we have two grants coming in, one from PennDOT, one from Department of Housing and Urban Development. These are for trails. We have Rich Braler here from the Planning Commission to talk a little bit about this program, where the money is going, and how it's going to be used, and again, maybe probably in the process, addressing the questions that Commissioner Warren had.
Good morning, I certainly addressed Mr. Warren's comments. Happy New Year. Glad to start off the new year by discussing my favorite topic, and that's trails. As you're aware, we opened the first phase of the Newtown Round Trail in about April of last year. This is the second section of that, basically phase two, which will take us from the endpoint of the existing round trail of Bristol Road, cross over Bustle and Pike, and go about 1.5 miles within the existing SEPTA rail line, and turn into the Churchville Nature Center. At this point, our construction estimate's about 2.8, and as we discussed when we hired Gilmore in February of last year, we would continue to seek construction funding force, and we were successful in that endeavor. One of those grants was through PennDOT's Transportation Set Aside Alternative Program, and that was for $1.5 million. And the second one is through the US HUD, Representative Fitzpatrick secured a community project funding grant, and that's for $1 million. Now, for item 12A, we're also hoping to get approval to allow me to go into PennDOT's engineering and construction management program and be allowed to approve those invoices from the contractor when that contractor's hired. And then that's all done online, that's why I need that approval. The second one, 12B, will allow Ms. McKevitt to sign the contract with HUD that actually allows the county to accept that grant of $1 million. That's the way HUD likes, like they like one person, one point of contact. And at that point, it was decided that Ms. McKevitt should be that person. As I said, we're currently under design and engineering, hoping to have that wrapped up by the end of this year, go to construction 2024, estimating anywhere from 18 months to two years, hoping less, but it remains to be seen as we're too early in the engineering phase to know exactly what kind of complexities we might run into as we do that. And as far as the timelines, it's basically the nature of the funding. PennDOT sent us a contract that has that particular timeline, shows us completing by August 29th to 25th, whereas HUD provided us a contract that showed us in 2030. It's just the nature of the contract. We're hoping to wrap this up by the end of 2025, for sure, hopefully earlier if we can.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Braler at the trails? No, appreciate all the work on this. I know they're, you know, the trail, I know this one especially, faced a lot of opposition at first, but now it's, people keep looking for expansions. And now, so we're looking at the expansion of the Upper Bucks Trail as well, and the Quaker Town, and one through Dark Hollow as well. So moving forward on trails, so thank you for all the work.
My pleasure.
Okay. So, Planning Commission, item 12, items one and two, accepting $1.5 million grant from PennDOT, accepting $1 million grant from HUD. Is there a motion to approve the regular agenda, item 12?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Personal actions, the Commissioners' list of personal actions. Are there any, a motion to approve that Commissioners' list?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, January is usually when a lot of board appointments come up, so we have quite a few, so you have to bear with us a little bit here. Airport Authority, five-year term, Mr. Paul Tellini is looking for reappointment for a term that will end 1/1/2028. Area Agency on Aging, three-year terms, three reappointments, Maggie Boyer, Karen, Beth Hirschman, Richard Newman, two new appointments, Jeff Trentley, Wilma Willoughby, all terms end 1/1/2026. Conservation District, there's always one board, one Commissioner appointment, which is on a year basis, and then, which would be myself, and then Mr. Joel Roney, to be reappointed, his term would end 12/31/26. Housing Redevelopment Corporation, three reappointments, Steve Morzolo, Ray Mizlinsky, Kim Scarpello, all terms end 10/1/2025. Human Relations Council, Frankie Berardi, term would end 1/1/25. Local Emergency Planning Committee, these are reappointments, James O'Malley, Stephen Stazola, George Wilson, terms would end 1/1/2025. Mental Health Development or Programs Advisory Board, three-year terms, Nicholas Emi, Kyle Esposito, Mont Flanagan, Ada Miller, all reappointments ending 1/7/2026. New Americans Advisory Commission, the Commissioners appoint the chair. Dr. Umar Farukh has been chair of the first couple of years of that board's, Commission's existence, we thank him for his work. He's been kind of pulled in all directions and has recently got appointed to something statewide, and so he's going to remain on the Commission but will not be chair. Sue Ann DeVito will be the chair appointment, that term will end 1/2/2024. Opportunity Counsel reappointment, three-year term, Shane Fitzgerald. Let's do those in a group, if that's okay? Any opposition to doing those in a group? Okay, so the appointments to Airport Authority, Area Agency on Aging, Conservation District, Housing Development, Human Relations, Local Emergency Planning Commission, Mental Health Development or Programs Advisory Board, New Americans Advisory Commission, and Opportunity Councils, are there a motion for those appointments?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pennsylvania Convention Center, Mr. Gary Messino was the Bucks County representative. He is unable to finish his term. The appointment would be myself, which term would end 12/31/2023. Is there a motion for that appointment?
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to abstain from this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Other civics, advocates for the homeless and those in need, $1,500. Christmas Gala, $1,500. Rolling Harvest Food Rescue, $2,500. Is there a motion to make those contributions?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chief Offering Officer, report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a couple of things I want to make mention of. One, I wanted to thank the county's, County Employee Recreation Association, held a terrific, wonderful, family-friendly holiday season kickoff event right before Christmas. They did a fantastic job. We had Santa, we had the Rudolph, we had Frosty. It was, it was really good. They really did a great job in planning and executing it. And our, our staff did a really, really nice job, really appreciate it. I just wanted to also say that I wanted to wish everybody a happy New Year, the board, and my fellow county employees, wishing you all a happy, healthy New Year, as well as our row officers. It is going to be a great year. It's going to be a busy year. We have a lot of projects, we have a lot of program expansions that each of the county divisions are working on, and it's going to keep us very busy. So thank you for all that you're doing, and keep up the good work. It's going to be a real busy year. And then one of the, one of the programs that we are expanding, Randy, if you could put up the, so we have been meeting with our economic and workforce development organizations for a few months now, and what we, what we all realized is that the good news of what we do here in county for workforce and economic development isn't shared by, by us very well. So we're trying to, to do better, and one way to do that is to have an information session that is open to the public, small businesses, large businesses, nonprofits. We have services for farmers, we have, we do, we do tax-free financing for farmers to purchase land to expand their, their services in the county. And we are going to host an event on January 11th. It's a virtual event, it'll include representatives from all our economic development organizations and workforce organizations, and they will provide information on how to connect to the many programs and the services that the county provides. If you would like to register, please visit the county's website. If you have some difficulty with registering on the county's website, if you could contact Brian Cummings in our county's Workforce and Economic Development Department, he will help you sign up for this program. Our chairman and commissioner will be kicking it off. We have, I believe, who is attending this? It will be Paul Ben Savango from our, our Visit Bucks County organization. Brian Cummings will be hosting it. TJ Lonergan will be representing the Bucks County Development Authority, and Bob Cormack, the Economic Development Corporation. I can read them all off. I'm sorry?
Jeff Darwak.
Jeff Darwak from the Redevelopment Authority, and Mark Solis from our Workforce and Economic, or actually, he's from PEA Career Link, will be joining us as well. So we're looking forward to that event. And that concludes my report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Listener report, Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Commissioner. The board held a standing executive commission, standing executive session that it has before board meetings, instead of the day before, because of the special schedule around this time of year. That happened on Friday, December 30th, it was virtual. The board met with staff and legal counsel to receive information and discuss personnel matters, collective bargaining issues, and litigation. Commissioner, we also would like to just put out a message to the public about retail price mistakes. This is something that the Consumer Protection and Waits and Measures Department This is something that the Consumer Protection and Waits and Measures Department has been hard at work on in the last few years. There's a really good segment some folks may have seen on CBS 3 that featured Mike Bannon, who's the head of that department, and one of our inspectors, Chris Tomlinson, talking about the work that, that they do. This has been an issue that's really started to ramp up ever since the American economy started to deal with major supply chain issues a couple of years ago, and the convergence of that and inflation have only made things worse. And what this is about is, you know, you, you go to the grocery store and, you know, you, you buy a, you put a head of cauliflower in your basket and you think it's $5. When you get home, when you're checking the receipt, you see you were charged 11 or 12. You, you pick up a pipe wrench you think is worth, going to cost you $6. It turns out it costs you 16. It's, it's very difficult for consumers because when you're trying to get out of the store, especially when you have a lot of stuff, you usually aren't in a position to take time. You may have a child with you, you, you may be trying to get to your next thing, you might be trying to get groceries back into the fridge and keep them cold. And so, so a lot of folks miss what's going on, which is that they are being overcharged. This is something that our, as I said, the Consumer Protection Department has been working hard on to address. We have, in the last year, worked closely with our district attorney and his staff to try and identify whether or not we think that these are sort of systemic practices, these patterns of, of store owners trying to cheat consumers. And mostly what we have found is this is simply a matter of, of business owners struggling to keep up with all these changes and, and really honest mistakes, but still mistakes that consumers are paying the price for. What we have had to do has been to use the enforcement power that, that our department has, Consumer Protection has, to, after talking to businesses and warning them about some of the problems that we're seeing, actually taking them to court and issuing fines to make sure that they take that corrective action. So we've, we've had a number of fines that have been issued and have been paid by businesses over the years. But making this work really depends on the public reaching out and letting us know when these things happen. So we, we urge everyone to really check your receipts when you get home, make sure that the price that you paid for something is the price that you expected to pay because of what you saw, when you saw it on the shelf. And if there's a problem, Consumer Protection is here to help. There's a hotline, 1-800-942-2669. You can also email them at consumerprotection@buxcounty.org, and they are on Twitter, not only as a way for people to reach them, but also as a, as a good source of information besides our website, which is buxcounty.gov. They are @BucksConsumer on Twitter, has had a really good information, source of information about, about these issues, as, as we do everything we can at the county level to make sure that people, that, that people are not being treated unfairly as consumers. That completes my report.
Thank you. All right, move to public comments. Andy Warren.
Thank you. This is a question about the budget. Under special revenues, no county match. Again, a good deal. Could you explain, or someone explain, the item number 5500, emergency rental assistance, $5.5 million? And then, item 5700, emergency rental assistance, $10.2 million? So the question is, what's the difference between the two emergency assistances? And the final question in that category, the end date for 5500, 5700, 5800, which is the ARPA, $72 million? That $88 million, do they all end in December 2024?
All right, well, when we get to answers, we'll ask our chief financial officer to dig into that. Ed Mackhouse?
Ed Mackhouse, again, from Buckingham. I'd like to talk about truth. So we had, know from Twitter Elon Musk is releasing information that the FBI was pressuring Twitter, as believed from Facebook, was also pressured to suppress information about the Hunter Lotta. So elections involve trillions of dollars and other things like the vaccines, which involves billions of dollars, we'll put in that. Public's entitled to right to know, there's right to know requests. I think Joss Shapiro was governor now, says he's breaking with Wolf, he's independent on it, so he, he has a lot of support now, and he, he should be able to come together with Republicans. There's Republicans, Democrats also support the vaccine, like he got $70 million the last campaign, more than any other person running for governor. I think he's strong enough that he should be able to deal with any of the right to know requests, and so he should approve it. I know, I think, I don't think you're holding up on the right to know request because anything you did wrong. I think it was from pressure from the government because of the billions of dollars, five new billionaires in, with the vaccine stuff. So I think the truth needs to come out, and people have the right to know, and I think Elon Musk and have the new Congress, the House controlled by Republicans, who can investigate the January 6 thing and the Hunter Biden laptop suppression, I think it's important that the truth come out, and somehow we could all work together and not have a civil war. I think we should have bipartisan stuff, like demonstrated here, and we should somehow politically solve these things without going to war. Thank you.
Priscilla Linden.
Priscilla Linden, Upper Makefield. Happy New Year. I originally was going to talk about three things. One, the first one I think I have to say and then retract. I was going to thank Mr. Mackhouse for not wearing his partisan political paraphernalia when he stands at this podium at a county meeting, but he's done, he's retracted that and worn it the second time, so I would just appeal, this is not the place for political campaigning. It's a place for discussing the services of the county to our citizens. Item two, I support agenda number one, all the programs for special needs folks, and I, I do not agree with the person who spoke against it. Item number three, we have been doing pretty well for the last couple of months about staying on agenda, but a speaker used the word courts to air once personal legal problems, and that's not the place to do that. It's not the agenda item that was named. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's curse you.
It's a free country. Ed can wear any hat he wants. If she can wear a diaper on her face, he can wear any hat. You misunderstood what I, what the question I asked, and it was just that, and again, like I said, we get the agenda like when I walk in, because you guys don't give it to us in time, so I'm okay with that kind of money going to that. It's just there's so many, much money going in this whole agenda, and we really don't know where it is. But the other thing is, this vaccine, Bucks County has an obligation to their citizens to stop calling, it's really a bioweapon. People are dropping dead, you don't see it on TV. Maybe Monday night will prove something, we'll see. The last seven days, this is what's coming out. Lyndon B. Johnson was a member of the KKK. The CIA killed JFK. The FBI paid Twitter over $3 million to ignore child exploitation and censor conservatives as, as the frontline doctors. So let's get in that with the child exploitation. The FDA midst COVID bioweapon causes blood clots. Twitter had a gauge of 80 FBI agents on the payroll. So, you know, and Sheriff, you're sitting in this room today, and Mr. Harvey told us he was going to cheat. He's on his cell phone, so he didn't hear me. Sheriff, you were in this room when Commissioner Harvey told us how he was going to cheat in the nursing homes, and he said it was, it was legally in Pennsylvania. It is not. And then they certified a thousand votes. Who went in and got those votes? Did the, did the, did some of the employees get it? Were they Democrat votes, and then it certified it? Jean was the only one that said no. We're not going to give up because you keep cheating. We know Fetterman didn't win. We know Josh Shapiro didn't win. These people never even go out and canvass and talk to people, they hide in their basements.
Thank, thank you. Megan Brock.
I just want to state my last comment, you violated my First Amendment right, and I wanted to give you the opportunity to add time and fix the mistake you made, if you'd like to, if you're interested in doing that. So I'm going to take it that's a no. The first time it came to one of these meetings was in August of 2021. It was in the midst of, the, the middle of the, the COVID hype. We had Dr. Damsger had just released guidance that was going to allow our kids to have a normal school year, and you changed it, not once but twice, within seven days. And as a parent, as a member of the community who has a lot of friends with kids, I knew how badly kids were struggling. So I came here, and I talked about the mental health, the increase of suicide that our kids were facing, and you ran out of the room. Unfortunately, you haven't stopped bullying me since that day. I wanted to bring to your attention an article that was recently published. Research reveals nearly 1 in 5 Wisconsin students seriously considered suicide last year. This is talking about 2021. The percentage of Wisconsin young adults who have considered suicide is at its highest rate in 18 years, with 18.1% of all students surveyed reporting that they seriously considered attempting suicide in the past 12 months. Goes on to say, they, they aren't surprising. If you're doing work on the ground, you'll see that kids are struggling. We just had a pandemic where we were isolated, and I think we have sort of a false assumption that everyone's just bouncing back. The reason that I came to this meeting in the first place, the reason that I've submitted public records requests, is because I care about children. You accuse me of being politically motivated, I'm not a politician. I don't want to be a politician. Y'all are politicians. You are the ones with the political motivations. I saw what was going to, what was happening, I saw what was going to happen if we didn't protect the mental health of our kids. I saw they needed a normal school year, and I came here, and I told you, and you ran out of the room, and you still have yet to face the reality of what has happened to our children.
Bonna DiArmond.
Bonna DiArmond, Plumstead. Is Bucks County a better place to work and live under the current Democratic leadership? Let's discuss. For example, your communications and policy director, Eric Nagy, Nagy, I apologize if I mispronounced your name, is formerly a campaign manager and actually has quite an extensive career as a, I would say, political operative. And he was appointed in his position, I think, because of his politics rather than his experience. Yesterday, Mr. Nagy made a tweet that stated, this is at 3:37 PM yesterday, "House Republicans simply cannot decide which sniveling little shit they want to get behind because they are determined to keep trying," with a little then popcorn emoji. So while at work, unless he was off yesterday, on taxpayer dollars, Mr. Nagy decides to insult Bucks County residents by insulting their elected officials. Is this what Bucks County government now stands for, for their communications? Is this how all of you up there feel about your constituents? I think it certainly is an example of the leadership climate that you have set. And I wonder if Mr. DeGrauolo, how you feel about this? I've only ever known you to be respectful in your interactions and even in your disagreements, and I have not seen that same respect coming from the other side. And I'm questioning, and I'm wanting to bring to light, that there is a division happening in Bucks County, not because of us getting up here and saying things that we're saying, we're trying to uncover and shed light on things, but because of the leadership, because that's how you feel about us. You look at me, and you don't see a human being. You label me with things that aren't true so that then you don't have to listen to me. I'm up here representing...
Thank you. Okay, those are names on the list, we'll move on, oh, actually, to do, address the questions. I'm sorry. Now, Ms. Walker, you weren't here, somebody else signed in for you. We don't, we don't do that here. I know that's common. I know that's common at school boards, that people just go in and sign for all their friends and then let their friends, you know, come in later. So... Yes, you have to be here to sign in for yourself, please. Okay, thank you. I dealt with as a high school teacher. Don't want to deal with it anymore. Comments or questions? Mr. Warren asked about the funding, the eRap funding. Mr. Boscolino, I want to address some of the differences between the different funds, one's 5.5, one's 10.2, the $88 million, et cetera.
Yes, Commissioner. The eRap funding, one, they're both federal funding programs. One is funneled directly from the federal government, the other one is funneled through the Commonwealth, both to come to the county. The amounts that were approved on the budget for 2023 are the amounts that are expected to be expended in the calendar year 23, even though all three of those programs extend past. The American Rescue Plan, we have until the end of 2024 to encumber funding, and there is a payout of another 10 months, nine or 10 months after that, to spend the money that's been encumbered through 2024. The eRap programs extend into 2025 as well. I expect unless there's more funding allocated through the eRap programs, they're probably going to be both expended in 2023, and those funds will be exhausted. The American Rescue Plan will be spent over calendar years 23 and 24. Does that answer your questions?
Yes.
Okay.
55 and 57 are the same program?
They're, they're the same program, federal funding, but one is funneled through the Commonwealth to the counties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of the other comments that were raised, certainly going through the worst pandemic in 100, over 100 years, a toxic political environment and social media, it is not a surprise, unfortunately, that the suicide rate might go up. Certainly, it's something we hope goes in the other direction. There is a Suicide Prevention Task Force in this county, largely thanks to Commissioner Marsegale and others. And so we encourage anyone who's having any kinds of issues of that nature, knows anybody who might be, to reach out to the Suicide Prevention Task Force here in Bucks County. Okay, that's all the issues I want to talk about here. In terms of Commissioner Comet, Commissioner DeGrauolo?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to wish everybody a happy new year, not only our employees, but everybody throughout Bucks County, happy and healthy. Health is so important. Just a couple of comments on what happened yesterday. We saw that in Washington and up in, in Harrisburg, because so, so much of what happens in Washington and Harrisburg affects us here in Bucks County and how our government operates. The, what played out in Washington, I mean, that's still to be determined. I understand we're going to go back in at 12 o'clock and try again to elect a speaker. Up in Harrisburg, and again, I have no inside information, but just reading the newspaper stories about what happened and how they elected a speaker up in Harrisburg, for me, is fascinating and really interesting. And I'm just trying to look at it from 120 miles away. Again, I did not talk to anybody, but what, what it appears to me is that they, well, it doesn't appear, they, they elected a speaker by the name of Mark Rossi, who I know very well. I consider Mark a friend. He's a Democrat. He's a Democrat. He's been up there in Harrisburg maybe 10 or 12 years. And he was the gentleman that led the charge in the state of Pennsylvania to remove that statute of limitations and allow children who were sexually abused years ago to come back and civilly sue the people that they accused of sexually abusing them. He took the lead on that. There was another gentleman who was Republican. His name is Jim Gregory. He also helped, both of them have been open about being sexually abused. When the final vote went up, it was 115 to 85 to elect Mark Rossi. And again, he was a Democrat, but once he was elected, he changed parties, which again is very interesting, and became an independent. It was a bipartisan vote. Republicans and Democrats both voted for him to become Speaker. And I think it showed that the two sides of the aisle were working together. Because the Republicans that voted for were the majority leader, some of them the majority leader, the majority appropriation chairman, and the majority whip, among others who voted for it. So I think it showed a little bit of promise and hope in the House, at least, that the two sides were willing to work together and negotiate this deal to put in a speaker who turned independent. Now, there are three special elections that have to happen. Once those three special elections are over, they're in heavily Democratic areas in western Pennsylvania. That'll make the numbers in the House 101 Democrats and 101 Republicans with one independent who is the Speaker of the House. So I think those numbers will force both sides to work together, to find compromise on issues that are important, not only across Pennsylvania, but to us here in Pennsylvania. And one of the issues I am really hopeful for, and again, it's so important what we do here in Bucks County, is the election reform. And I'm hoping with the new governor and the House and the Senate working together, they can put a bill together that'll really help us out, all the counties out, in making our election process safe and secure and fair. So that's the one thing I'm looking forward to, to see if that happens. Have that, Mr. Speaker.
Commissioner Marceglio?
Just a real quick thank you. As we begin the new year, even though it's warm today, we have a lot of volunteers and churches working for the Code Blue, taking care of people who need shelter for the evening. And I just wanted to thank them.
Okay. Thank you. Just a couple of things. For a long time as a teacher, I taught, the thing I taught the most in 26 years was global studies. Had a couple of different names. Sometimes it was called world cultures, sometimes it was called global studies. But it involved teaching world religions, world geography, world history, current events going on around the globe. And I'd also taught American history for a long, most, much of my career. But occasionally, you get, you hear a student come in and ask a question about why do I have to learn about the rest of the world? And there's a lot of answers to that. These were usually ninth graders that had the class. So there's a lot of answers to that. Obviously, we live in a world that is not as isolated as a country. We're not as isolated as we used to be 100 years ago. The oceans that were basically like moats that kept us safe are not impenetrable anymore. 9/11 obviously proved that to be true. The pandemic also proved that to be true. Viruses in one part of the planet don't stay where they are. They travel. I would also talk about the fact that as a country that's made up of immigrants from all over the world, you know, it was a pretty good, you know, United Nations just sitting up here at this dais in terms of, you know, backgrounds. You're going to run into people in your neighborhood, in your schools, in your workplaces, wherever, who are going to be different than you, different religions, different backgrounds. And so learning a little bit about them can only make things easier and better. But usually, you could always tell if a student had, was hearing something at home about, like, you know, why don't we spend more time on America? I say, well, you're having one year to learn about global studies. You're going to do American history at least one year. You're going to have American government at least one year. So with the four years of high school, you're spending two to three times as much time on American history, American government, as you are on global. And I've heard, you know, over the years, you know, we need to spend more time on America, need to do more things for Americans. And it's interesting to still be hearing that, because between the CARES Act and the ARPA that was passed, over the past few years, this country has allocated $4.1 trillion, trillion with a T, trillion dollars to focus on American issues, on Americans. And so it far eclipses any kind of foreign aid that might go to some nation around the world. Question today about, you know, caring about veterans, which ignores completely the fact that in August, you had a law passed that expanded healthcare for veterans. We talked about it here. It affected our Veterans Affairs Office because now more illnesses that veterans are subject, were subject to because of exposures to toxicities in the Middle East and other places, similar to what happened with Vietnam veterans with Agent Orange. That expansion has helped veterans here in this county because they weren't able to get access before, and now they are. You know, and so it's, you know, we do focus a lot, and this, obviously, in this county, we focus, you know, on the residents of this county. And so just today, again, going through the numbers, millions of dollars being allocated to help those who suffer some, you know, who have some kind of challenge, special needs of some type in their families, to children, to emergency management, which focuses on the entire county. So just a couple of things, it's just, you know, once in a while, you hear something, you just say, I have to say something about that. Wish everybody a very happy new year, and we'll look forward to productive 2023. Thank everybody for their work. And entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.